Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, welcome back. The Board conducted two interviews down in the Wheelwright Room, and now, as it is 7 o'clock PM, we will call the meeting to order for a regular business. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Board. Good evening to respective town staff and those in attendance, and good evening to those watching us from home. Welcome to the May 1st, 2023 Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the Board. To my right is Selectman Dan Chartren. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
And our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Wally Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Hello, everyone.
And Selectwoman Nancy Valandra. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine.
Good evening.
We have our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy. Good evening. And our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. And my name is Nico Papakostandis. We'll start with a bid opening for the Kingston Road Project. My understanding, Mr. Dean, is we do not have any bids as of yet?
That's right. And we're checking with the engineering firm and one of our employees on next steps.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next is public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to comment. We don't have any public in the room, and I do not see any attendees via Zoom, so we will go right through that. We do have proclamation this evening for Municipal Clerks Week that our Clerk, Selectwoman Gilman, will read.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. State of New Hampshire, Your Excellency Christopher T. Sununu, Governor. A proclamation in the year of our Lord, 2023, Municipal Clerks Week, April 30th to May 6th, 2023. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants; and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in rendering equal service to all; and whereas municipal clerks serve as the information center on functions of local government and community; and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk and thank them for their vital services they perform, as well as their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Now, therefore, I, Christopher T. Sununu, Governor of the State of New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim April 30th to May 6th as Municipal Clerks Week in the State of New Hampshire, and call this to the attention of all citizens.
Terrific. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have the approval of the Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of April 17, 2023. I would first ask the Board if there are any revisions or amendments to the minutes. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of April 17, 2023.
So moved. Second.
The motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. We have two appointments this evening from our interviews earlier. I would entertain a motion to appoint Kevin Kahn to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire April 30th, 2026.
So moved. Second, that's a full member, correct?
That's a full member, correct. So motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes. We thank Mr. Kahn and welcome him. And then, Selectwoman Valandra, do you want to make the motion for...
Yes, I move to appoint Valerie Fanger as an alternate to our Conservation Commission for term to expire on April 30th, 2025.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes, and we thank Valerie and welcome both to our respective committees. Jumping into our discussion items, I would ask the board's indulgence in holding the first discussion item titled "Special Town Meeting" for our next meeting scheduled for May 15. The reason being is we need to amend some of the timeline that's in our packet, and it would be premature to have the discussion this evening. However, we will have it on May 15 if the board will indulge. Any objections?
None.
None.
Thank you. With that, we have Paul Velasic, interim Public Works Director, with us this evening for an update on the siphons. Good evening, Mr. Velasic.
Good evening, Paul Velasic, the interim Public Works Director. So at the last board meeting, you folks had approved $2.6 million to move the siphon project along, and that is the funds that was necessary to construct one barrel by directional drilling across the river. Since that time, we've been working on the change orders to effectuate those changes. And we're circulating those change orders now, and the contractor has mobilized to the site today to resume getting ready for those directional drills. And I think the drilling company would start drilling on next Monday, and we expect a minimum of two weeks for the pilot hole to be done. One very important thing that has happened outside of the board and the town is our engineers previously had done the calculations for if a two-barrel system would work instead of the three-barrel system that we currently have in design. What we have under design right now is a 12-inch and two 10-inch. What the engineers have already calculated was that it would be okay if we could, with the high flows and the low flows, use two 12-inch barrels. New Hampshire DES has approved that concept, and now we are going ahead with the possible two 12-inch siphon system. And in our change orders that we are circulating now for signatures, there's also the caveat that the contractor will hold some prices and will nail down some of those for the second 12-inch barrel also. And also with me tonight, if you have any of those financial questions, Kevin Garvey from Wright Pierce has been with the project all along.
Terrific. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Velasic about it this time?
No. I have none at this time either.
Okay. We'll look forward to an update a week after the digging begins, hopefully.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have Jay Perkins, Highway Superintendent, here this evening to discuss 2023 paving and a recommendation for the road paving contract. Good evening, Mr. Perkins.
Good. How are you?
Good.
So I think you all have in your packet Bell &amp; Flynn's proposal for the paving, and they're holding the prices, so.
Terrific.
You have to get your approval tonight to move forward with it.
Okay. Memo's very straightforward. Are there any questions for Mr. Perkins?
Oh, I do have a question. Yes. How does this price compare with previous years?
It's the same.
Yeah, he's been holding that price for quite a few years, haven't we?
Yeah.
So there's been no... I'm the newbie. There's been no inflationary spiral?
Since 2019, Jay?
Since 2019, just the fuel, but it's gone back.
That's incredible. Well, let's approve this as quickly.
And then, the streets that are scheduled, Jay, the same as on the memo?
Yes.
Colonial Way, Heritage Way, Drinkwater Road?
Yep. The only thing that's not on here is we have $50,000 of the 700 allocated for crack sealing, and I do not have the price yet.
Okay.
I'll have to come back when I have that.
Okay. If there are no other questions or comments for Mr. Perkins, I would entertain a motion to extend the road paving contract with Bell &amp; Flynn for 2023 as proposed. $71.90 per ton for binder course, $72.90 per ton for surface course, $73.90 per ton for urban compact surface course, $74.90 per ton for smaller neighborhoods with dead ends.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next two agenda items, discussion items regarding Town Hall, historic building condition assessment, future needs assessment, as well as Town Hall Chairs, and I believe we're representatives?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would you indulge me and allow me to recuse myself on this item since my business does do events in the Town Hall?
I think that would be the right thing.
Yeah, I'm gonna sit out here.
So while I find my place here, we have two members of the Exeter Arts and Culture Commission with us this evening, Mr. Tony Calendrello. Good evening.
Thank you.
And Mr. Scott Ruffner behind him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Tony Calendrello. I am a member of the Exeter Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. And also, Mr. Dean, probably close to a year ago convened a working group of people who had an interest in the Town Hall and making improvements in the Town Hall. And just to refresh the board's memory, if you recall, we did a survey back, I think it was almost two years ago now, in 2021 over what improvements people wanted to see in the Town Hall, as well as what types of programming they would like to have seen. So we've been... I was tasked, coming out of this working group meeting, with coming up with a plan of short, medium, and long-term actions to be taken in the Town Hall. And of course, other events have occurred that have prompted some things to leapfrog others, I believe. But one of the important steps, because that is a historic structure, is to do a historic building conditions assessment. And that's an assessment done by an architect who has historic background to look at what elements of the building need to be preserved, to preserve the historic nature of the building, what other things maybe are more modern additions, or other things that could undergo some modification. So we have received a proposal from Arkove Architects out of Portsmouth. I know representatives from the firm have visited the Town Hall before they prepared the proposal, so they did have the benefit of an onsite visit for that. This historic conditions assessment would be done in parallel with a second task, which is the future needs assessment. And the results of those two activities, and they would be done in parallel, would be to create an action plan, as I was tasked to come up with, of short, medium, long-term items that would also include budgetary estimates for that, so that we could use that to develop a capital plan for work at the Town Hall. With that, the pricing on this is, for the historic building conditions assessment, was $8,750. And then, for the future needs assessment, is $9,900. The Arts and Culture Advisory Commission did meet and voted to make a recommendation to the Select Board that we move forward with that and to request the board to allocate money from the Town Hall Revolving Fund, where the balance is around, I think the last time we checked was $24,600. It may be slightly more than that now, but it's round numbers. There certainly is enough to perform these two tasks. We did receive a proposal for a third task, which was to do a 3D imaging of the inside of the Town Hall. I was told by Public Works that they already have that information, so we will not be doing that scope of work. With that, I would ask the board to allocate funds for that, and certainly here to answer any questions that you might have.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for checking with Public Works. That's important. Selectwoman Gilman, I know that I believe you were working with the group that Mr. Calendrello referred to. Do you have any other comments or suggestions?
We submitted a grant to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for just the first part of this, the historic building condition survey, which we were not awarded. But it's, I think I'm gonna submit it again with a little bit different explanation. I think I gave them a little too much future detail, as opposed to, we just wanna know what we have.
Right. The New Hampshire Preservation Alliance does have grant money available for this matching fund, so they would match up to $4,500 of town expenditure. So I did speak with Selectwoman Gilman, and I think it may make sense just to submit the grant again with a little clearer explanation of what we're trying to do.
Okay. And would the grant be to cover something like this, or for what the recommendations are?
This grant would just be for the first part that Mr. Calendrello spoke of. It's just the historic building survey.
I see. Okay. Understood. And Mr. Dean, can you confirm the balance of the revolving fund?
So right now, we have $24,600 in the fund, but that doesn't include the March appropriation of $5,000, so I'm suggesting that it's closer to $30,000.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Any questions of the board?
Mr. Chairman, just one other item.
Sure, please.
I did speak with the consultant a couple of weeks ago, and then also today, and just reiterated that, given the latest information from Department of Labor on the facility, that she would be including that in the assessment as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, why don't we break this down into two motions? And Mr. Dean, do you sign the contract?
If authorized, yes.
Okay. Let's see. I would entertain a motion to approve $8,750 to be spent from the Town Hall Revolving Fund for Arkove Architecture to conduct a historic building conditions assessment of the Town Hall and further authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0. One abstention. Actually, no, he's recused. 4-0. And then, I would entertain a motion to approve the amount of $9,900 to be spent out of the Town Hall Revolving Fund for Arkove Architects to conduct a future needs assessment report for the Town Hall and further to authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Calendrello.
Thank you.
I almost didn't recognize you.
I'm all dressed up for you guys. Hey, everybody. Scott Ruffner with the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. So Tony was kind of ringleading these assessments, and I've been kind of ringleading the movement here to replace some chairs at Town Hall. And we are in a position where we have already raised or have commitments funding in the amount of approximately $3,000 toward a figure of $7,198.80 to purchase 240 lifetime commercial-grade contoured folding chairs that are available from Sam's Club online store that we found was almost half the price of the original quote that we had that was going directly through that company. And our initial ask or recommendation was that they be funded through ARPA funds, but now that we realize that there's a lot more in the Town Hall Revolving Fund, and that we realize that, and we're confident that we can raise most of the funding back that's going to be invested into the chairs through donorships, sponsorships, and fundraising, we really don't have a preference as to what makes more sense, where the funding comes from, if it makes more sense to come from the Town Hall Revolving Fund, and then the money that comes into the town toward the chairs goes back in there to replenish the funding. Whatever you guys think makes more sense. The only additional cost would be $110 that we would, someone would need to have a Sam's Club Plus membership to make this purchase. And the shipment is included in all of this, if that makes sense.
Does DPW have a Sam's Club?
We're not aware of anyone, any department that has a Sam's Club Plus or a Sam's Club membership.
No, it'd be you and not a department.
Might be a good idea, though.
So.
We'll have one.
Have a party.
Can you describe the chairs to us?
They are plastic and metal. We found a color that everyone discussed that seemed to fit tastefully into the Town Hall. They're not like stark white chairs. They're kind of a gray and putty color, so there's kind of a beige tone to them. They also fit the standards for 500 pounds maximum, you know, so there was a lot of research that had gone in through Parks and Rec early on to make sure weight requirements, they're easily stored.
Are they stored in the Town Hall?
Yes. They would be stored in the same areas on the little lifts where the old chairs. They do make some movable storage devices that could be invested in later, but for now, they seem to stack nicely in that area.
Okay, good.
Scott, how much is that storage, movable storage unit?
They're roughly $550 each, and we would need four of them for the 240 chairs.
Okay.
If we wanted to invest in those. And this number of chairs, 240, is one, I think, the original bid that Greg had gotten was for 300 chairs. And we kind of did some research just asking different groups how many chairs they actually use for their events and setups that they use, and 240 seemed to be a number that was what was used often. So again, it's something that in the future, if we needed more, we could get more anytime.
Could I have one follow-up?
Please.
Because normally, we have a picture, so I can't go by a picture of the chair.
Um, yeah, I can.
The, what do you call them, the legs on the chairs? They're not gonna scratch up the floor? They've got rubber?
Yeah, yeah, they've got rubber, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of what else.
Any other?
Sorry. And then, we've talked a lot about the old wooden chairs and doing fundraising and allowing people from the community, and there's already people with interest in donating toward the new chairs. And we just have to come up with a plan as far as whether it would be a price point for the chairs or a minimum donation, and you would get a chair, so that's something. And, I'm sorry, one other thing. We have bought more time because there was a bit of a rush, because there was an event going on. Because of other circumstances, they've now moved to the high school for the Pine Street players, but they are still willing to donate some money as well. But we pretty much have the summer to deal with this, because the UFO Festival would be the first big event that they're putting up $1,000, the Kiwanis Club that does UFO Fest, and they just wanna know that the chairs will be there in time for their event.
I can't say that. Yeah. So Scott, how would this sponsorship work? I mean, will there be names be on the chairs? Are they just donating the money?
there be names be on the chairs? Are they just donating the money?
Yeah, I mean, no, yeah, no one was really looking for anything like that. I mean, it's groups that use the town hall.
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we all understood that that was the case. Yes, we're finally, been talking about this for a long time.
Do you have any questions? All right, well, let's, let's do some math. So you need $7,198.80.
And 80 cents.
Total, and 80 cents.
Plus a Sam's Club Plus membership.
I have to tell you, I would add in the storage unit only because.
Thank you.
Because I see these things standing up on the side of the wall and just sliding right off. Plus, it'll be faster to take up and down.
Can you turn that around so he can, Scott, do you mind coming up to just see, confirm that's the chair?
Yep. I mean, that's not the color. It looks like lighter color, but it's the.
That's the chair.
The contour.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman.
Yeah, I would like to.
And how much were the, were the units?
The storage?
Off the top of my head, I think they're 550. I mean, it's something I can probably find quickly.
Just went away.
So like another $2,500?
Yeah.
Rough, roughly?
$2,100.
$2,200.
So, so we're looking at roughly $9,700 for the chairs and the, and the units.
But with the fundraising, hopefully we'd get that back, too. That's a possibility. I mean, I don't.
Well, let's go backwards to 90s. And then you have $3,000 confirmed?
Uh, yes. And there's a couple of other organizations interested in sponsoring as well, but they have to go through their boards to get approval. I'm trying to find the.
Mr. Dean, walk us through how we accept the donations and how, in the future, if the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission can obtain further donations, et cetera, how would that be paid, reimbursed to the revolving fund if we were to use those?
So we'll, we'll bring those donations back to the board for acceptance, and then they'll go into the fund.
And with the, with what we just voted to allocate out of the Town Hall Revolving Fund estimate balance?
Um.
10 grand?
30, 15, about, I'm estimating about eight.
Eight?
Left.
And we're talking about 240 chairs? Is that what you said?
240 is, yeah, is based on the $7,198.80.
So.
Melissa just found the racks, the storage racks.
Yeah, the dollies.
They were $5.79 each, and they hold 72 chairs. You may be able to find them cheaper, but that's just what I was looking at.
Yeah, you can find them on Uline. The ones I just looked at were 185 each, holding 60 chairs.
For lifetime chairs?
I believe so.
Where are you?
Uline.
Oh, Uline, yeah. So that's what I mean. I don't, sort of right away, I don't know what's right.
It came up with, yeah, it came up with the.
Mr. Ruffner, when will you know from the other donors?
Um, I mean, I don't have a set date, but it's something that, you know, as soon as we know, then we can really.
Within the next month.
Keep us posted, you know, where, how far along in the process we are.
Okay. So if we allocate $6,700, then that's going to leave our revolving fund balance at 1,300.
Okay.
Mr. Dean, what else would you anticipate utilizing that fund for in the near future?
I think these are, I don't have a crystal ball for that, so it'd be hard to say. I have not heard of other projects coming forward.
Okay.
At this point.
Thoughts to the board?
Can we take the, this donor sponsorship money in first and then have that into the account before we make the purchase? Or does it matter which order it goes in?
Well, that, that's why I asked, I asked the question. So you have $3,000 now.
Yeah.
That would have to come back before the board to formally accept the donations.
Okay.
But why I asked the question was if you think that, you know, the other donors could make a decision within the next month or so, we could hold off.
Okay.
And just so that we have a better amount, we know what we're taking out of the fund, I think it'd be easier that way than trying to reimburse the fund. Or maybe once the chairs are bought, maybe donors would be less likely to.
Yeah. Well, I think once the chairs are approved, whether they're purchased or not, I mean, I think that will make it a lot easier to raise more funds. And there's, it's not an urgent situation now that there's really nothing coming up until Labor Day weekend that they need the chairs. So we've got plenty of time. And I think the turnaround on the shipment is literally two to three weeks, so it's not a long turnaround time.
And we don't anticipate the cost of the chairs going up?
I don't have a crystal ball.
I like where you're going with this.
Yeah.
To get the money and to cover, I would like to, once we get a number down on the storage units, too, so we can factor those.
So I think the chairs are great.
Yeah.
I like the chairs. I like the fact that you've conducted extensive research of what, what fits best in the town hall for everybody to be comfortable, because I think comfort has been an issue. So, I mean, I like these chairs. I think we'll be able to easily store them. I don't have a problem using Town Revolving Fund money, but I think I'd like to know, get a more precise idea of what we'd get for donations.
Also, remember that the existing wooden benches, bench chairs, we can make surplus and sell in some fashion. So have revenue that comes into the Town Hall Fund. I can't quote a price, but they're, they get pretty pricey on Amazon.
Yeah. And should checks just be made out to the town of Exeter for the people that are contributing to this?
Yes.
Put in the memo line, Town Hall.
I was going to say. No, this is specifically, yeah, what it's for.
So, do you have a ballpark? I don't want to know who potential donors may be. That's not fair to ask, but do you have a?
It's totally fair. I can tell you who.
Ballpark figure of what you're anticipating?
Um, I think we could get to 4,500 to 5,000 just from the larger contributions. And I think we're in a situation, isn't the Arts and Culture Commission, I mean, we can raise funds, correct, that can go, I mean, because we've talked about, there's other people that are interested in, you know, I'll donate $50, just citizens and not necessarily organizations. So is that something we can do as well if we, if we want to put the word out?
Again, the board's authorized to accept donations, so it just depends on what it is. And, I mean, I, in a general sense.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out if there's a difference between, you know, the Arts and Culture Commission fundraising versus, just so we understand, versus, you know, the money going toward the chairs.
I think that since we're taking money out of the Town Hall Revolving Fund to do this, that's where the money should go.
No, I agree. I'm just wondering if the clearance that we got to raise funds, was it to raise funds to go directly into the Town Hall Revolving Fund? That's just what I'm trying to remember.
There is a second fund that was, at the 2022 town meeting, was, we did the administrative change. It had been controlled by the Exeter Arts Committee, was then changed so that the Exeter Arts and Culture Advisory Commission managed that fund. It had a few thousand dollars, maybe $1,500 in it. And I think that was also, that was the repository, depository for donations that came in through the art gallery. So I think that there's a mechanism to fund that and perhaps then just transfer money over to the revolving fund if that's the cleanest way to do it. So that, and I don't, I don't pretend to know what the restrictions are on accepting donations, but it seemed like those were donations that were made in small amounts to the art gallery that then were put into that fund and whether, whether it would require the select board to accept that donation or whether we could accumulate it and then make a major donation that the select board could, could accept. I think we're, we don't care as long as we can get the donations into the Town Hall Capital Fund.
Can you clarify that, Mr. Dean?
I, I'll try. The, the other fund that Tony mentioned is an expendable trust fund, and that, that was, the old arts committee was, as Tony pointed out, was, were made stewards of that fund. And then that changed over to the Arts and Culture Commission. So I believe money can go into either fund. It just depends on what the, what the will of the donor is and what, you know, how that would work. But there's flexibility to accept funds into both of those funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's a perfect answer, but it's, they can go into either one.
It almost like it's an indirect route. And I'd rather say for this, a way that we can do it, more of a direct.
Yeah.
Way of saying that this money, we're doing an arts in the gallery, you know, and the money we're raising tonight is for the chairs. And whatever money is in there comes, goes to Corey, and he deposited.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
You see where I'm going with this? It just seems more of a direct.
We can put a timeline on it.
I don't know.
As far as, we have this amount of time to do the fundraising. And as long as we know exactly where these checks, checks are being made out to the town of Exeter with Town Hall chairs on the memo or however you guys want it, then we can take that amount of time to even try to reach, you know, the goal for everything and then deal with the purchase after that.
So, yeah, I don't think there's any opposition to the chairs.
Okay.
And I.
In the dollies, we, we talked about to get them or not to get them. We will have to figure out, I don't know, because, you know, the old chairs are stored on the little lift that's on either side of the town hall. There's really no way to get the dollies up there. So we may have to figure out a new spot for the dollies. They could go in the sort of coat room that's right there, and they could obviously easily be wheeled out. So they definitely do serve a good purpose and will make it a lot easier to have the chairs wherever you want them in the building. They could even go up to the second floor. I think they would fit in the elevator, so.
Do we know what those lifts are for?
Yeah.
They've just been there forever, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, I know, right?
For the storage of the chairs.
Right, so they can.
I think they're stored like piping.
Right, so if we can even.
And they could have been.
Have a little ramp.
Lifts for chairs on the perimeter in the past.
I know, chairs have been there forever. That was the storage place because it was the most, whatever, but.
And I really would recommend trying to figure out a way to get those, get a solution to using the dollies because stacking up even a third of 240 chairs takes four people. And if you had to trot back and forth.
Right.
To do that.
I think they'd be worth their money. Yeah. Maybe we can, we always have such great people who are inventive that work for our town. And maybe they can find a little way of putting a little lift or something that they can wheel it up there. Who knows?
So it's like a month, enough time for you to come back?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're meeting potentially three times in June, the first of which would be June 5th.
Yep.
But as you start to talk to folks, if you want to reach out to Mr. Dean or me and just let me know, let us know what date you'd like to come back, we'll have you come back. Because I think this is, this is a great next step.
Okay. But, so the people that are ready to write the checks, should they go ahead and submit them to the town? Or should we wait until this one, this next meeting? Or how do you want to proceed with that?
I would put it actually in the Arts Commission's account for right now.
Yeah.
So the accounting for the chairs just takes place at that, in that fund. And then when the purchase is.
Okay, gotcha.
So let's, so give Mr. Ruffner some clarity.
No, I forgot about the Town Hall.
I think this is a fair question for, because I, I know where you're coming from.
I'd like Corey to weigh in, maybe. He could have some, Corey Stevens, maybe?
To be the easiest thing.
I'd suggest we hold on to them for a period of time until.
But fairly, he wants to be able to represent that the town is interested in buying the chairs, or the town is interested in, in these chairs. So as a board.
The Town Hall Fund would be better.
Are we comfortable with saying that we, we would like to move forward with these chairs once we raise money? And that we may be able to look at what's in the revolving fund, should he, should the commission not be able to?
Have a shortfall?
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, I absolutely think that's a wonderful idea. Just where, where should the, if Scott next week can start getting checks, maybe the Town Hall Revolving Fund or something instead of, we, we need to come up with a place where he can park this money. Or he can just hold on to the checks. I don't know what you're comfortable with.
So if it's okay, Mr. Chair, we can consult with the finance director and make that call if you're comfortable with it.
Get back to Mr. Ruffner?
Yes.
Can we do that before the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We talked about tomorrow.
Great.
You guys are approving the in theory fundraising. You can work with Scott.
So we're, we're actually tasking Mr. Ruff, this is a great idea. We're asking the commission and folks representing the commission to try to go out and get us an amount of money that folks may want to donate, at which point we will look at the revolving fund for whatever shortfall there may be between what you raise in the next month or so and, and now. But I think he needs that commitment from us. Not a motion, but it's a commitment that lets, we're tasking you to move forward. In the meantime, Mr. Dean, we'll get back to you this week with the logistics of, once you start receiving the donations, how do we take them and keep them? Does that, does that work?
That all makes sense to me. I guess the, the only thing would be with the dollies, if that's, because I think that's going to have to go through a separate company. I don't know if that's a Sam's Club thing. So there might be additional cost with getting those shipped.
What I just looked up was from Sam's Club.
It's the same thing? Okay, all right.
Do you really do want them to be made for the type of chair that you use?
Exactly, okay.
To be determined on.
To be determined, yeah.
How's that?
Okay, so next steps, Mr. Dean, we'll get back to you this week with the logistics to accept for taking in the payment. And you'll get back to us when you want to come back in June.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you very much for the work you've both done.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. There. Exciting.
Mr. Chartrand, welcome back.
We have to get on that, selling the old ones.
Who would be responsible, though?
In the State Parks, right?
Okay.
Talked about before.
Thank you.
So we'll have to bring that the next time it comes, or have, about who would sell the chairs, make sure that's what we're.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
So while Mr. Dean stepped out for a minute, Mr. Chartrand, this has been a work in progress, this next discussion item. Originally, about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, then Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I were tasked by the board to work as a subcommittee to come up with some suggestions, do a comprehensive review of our boards and committees, policies and procedure. We looked at what we do internally. We also examined what some of our peers in other communities do. And we came back to the board initially in October 18th of 2021. And we had a very thorough discussion, took some suggestions and ideas from the entire board, worked on this a little bit more, and came back November 21st, 2022. And this is the final draft, which was inclusive of the second round of ideas and suggestions. And what I was hoping the board would do is take a look at this while I was in our packet and make a decision of whether or not this is ready for primetime for the town manager's office to maybe incorporate this into policy.
The.
Go ahead. Nope.
The training aspect, at the bottom of page one, new member appointee orientation, sorry. We have to provide the. The training aspect at the bottom of page one, new member appointee orientation, sorry. We have to provide the recommended place for people to, from the different boards and commissions to get that education, to see the land use boards going to the office of planning development, but the arts committee, you know, maybe not. They just need to know how to run a meeting. I was at actually an office of planning and development conference this weekend as a panelist on one of the preservation topics and that was one of the things they were recommending is that annually each, each committee go through what the rules of procedure are, what their mission is, what their, and make goals for the next year and then you have that all in here. So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. I think for each board or commission can designate where to go for training. Who would take, the chair be the one to undertake the orientation?
I think what we discussed was either, well, someone from the town manager's office, ideally, I think Melissa, we nominated you, to sit with the new committee member and that committee member chair and the select board rep to go over, you know, just, just go through an orientation. Of course, some are going to be more thorough than others depending upon whether it's an advisory committee or land use committee, but obviously the chair of that committee and the, I didn't mean to say select board rep, I meant the department head rep. So for that it'd be Dave, you know, Greg for advisory committee and all of that. And also incorporate the 91A town policies and procedures and how a meeting should be run. I think that was the thought behind that. I mean, each one's going to vary depending upon
Yeah.
what the committee or board does for workers.
The only thing that I'm, was wanted to suggest is the bi-annual meeting for all committees and boards, that we set a date. So say the first Monday in June and the first Monday in November, something. We can't do a specific date because it changes, right? But I just, I think people who are on the boards and committees, in fairness to them, they can get those in their calendars instead of waiting for us to assign a date.
That's a good idea.
That is a good idea.
Agreed.
So what are you proposing like?
Well, I wrote June 1st and December 1st, but it was just out of, with no rhyme or reason.
Yeah, those are, I don't know, there's no good time of year.
So, but knowing, that's a good idea, but knowing, not knowing the calendar each year, instead of saying the first
Because it might be a Wednesday.
Right. Could you say like the first week of June and the first week of December?
Or like the first week, the first Monday in June and the first Monday
Yes, yes, that's what I meant. When I said June 1st was the first Monday in June, yes.
No, I know, but we could schedule the select board meetings around.
Maybe the first Thursday or a Wednesday, there's not
Thursdays are tough.
Thursdays are tough.
Um, just because of planning boards. Yeah, and communication, they're having enough problems. Do you think a Saturday is too much to?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be there, but actually if it's the first Thursday, there's no planning board meeting on the first Thursday.
No, typically no. And yeah, Wednesdays don't seem to be much, is Wednesday a committee meeting night? I never have that on my calendar, so
Just the heritage commission.
Okay, no.
But that's once a month, so just
But it's never, I don't think, I don't think there's any first Wednesday.
No.
So there we go, first Wednesday.
June and the first Wednesday of December.
And of, do we want to do December? Yeah, because we're past budget. I was trying to
It's never a good time.
There isn't. Budget's tough, that, that two nights a week thing.
Well, and maybe we could do, if it's the first Wednesday in December, also tag on our holiday party.
Oh, for volunteers.
Yeah.
That would get more people to come.
There you go. And then if it's in December, we do it anyway. And so like, okay, here's the business portion.
Yeah.
And then we're all gonna
Right. And then the first Wednesday of June, you know, if, the reappointments will have happened and things, so.
So, Mr. Dean, can, can you write that in the margin there?
Yes.
Great. Any other suggestions?
The most important wording in this document is that you use the word "may" forfeit their membership, given the current state of our rosters. I like that it's at our discretion, so good job there. That's it, that's all I have.
How about you, Slippin Town? So, Mr. Dean, do we want to form this up into like a formal policy that the select board can adopt?
A board policy? Sure. We can do that.
Okay. Going once, going twice? Any other suggestions?
It's Robert's Rules of Order. Instead of
Good cat.
Did you get that one, Mr. Dean?
Got it.
Great. Great.
And thank you to you and Lavi for all the work you did on this. It was
Yes, and I would like to, once again, thank former select woman, Row Trioliff, for working very hard on this with me and certainly could not have done this without her, so thank you. Also in our packet, we had talked about attendance, you know, we've talked about that, I think every time we talk about committees and boards and keeping attendance. And one of the things in here that I think we need to hold the chairs accountable is presenting attendance records. And moving forward, that's stuff that we can work with the chairs. I know some boards take attendance, some town staff that are assigned to the committees take attendance, but I think we need to make sure all of our chairs are taking attendance, submit them to town manager's office so that we can review annually because attendance is important.
One of the things that was recommended at this workshop that I went to was creating the opening script for the chair, because each board is a little different and the planning board and the HDC accept an application as complete and then they deliberate on whether or not it's acceptable or appropriate. So the public needs to know how the operation of the meeting goes, but also just to remind who's there, but, you know, someone will make a motion, someone will second it, you know, we are here, introduce the members and that's where you can check off who's there or not. So I don't know if I was very clear on what I said, but each committee should have a script, each committee chair should have a script.
We talked about that with the scenario that you faced, select women, Beland, at a planning board meeting where they were absent, the chair and vice chair and
And thankfully we had
Fortunately, the clerk was there. Yeah, I think, Mr. Dean, that's not a bad idea to look at, having a script written out.
Yeah, we had experienced people on the planning board and thank goodness, Mr. Cameron, who was a retired attorney, thought to go and look at the RSA's and knew the process that we had to go through for him to be the chair that night, for him to run the meeting. So here, it's automatic. If Nico's not here, it's Molly, if Molly, then it's Julie, but there was a different process on the planning board and Pete stuck to it. But yeah, it's important, so.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to weigh in on that. I am a big fan of scripts and choreography. I think there is a style that we should aspire to in all of our meetings and you epitomize it, actually. It's crisp, it's clean, it's knowledgeable and that's what we should direct all of our chairs towards. So a script is an excellent idea.
Thank you. Appreciate your kind words as well.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Dean, at your convenience, sometime soon we'll
Begin to work.
create that and then bring it back to the board to
Put it under development.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, turn to our clerk for regular business.
Yes.
It's your turn. We've got some exemptions and a timber yield tax.
Scrolling, scrolling, scrolling.
And you're so good at consolidating these, so
Yes, I will do the same.
I encourage you to continue that.
We have many pages here. Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $152,251, $152,251 for the tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 298. MAPS 95, lot 64, unit 216. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 18. MAP 63, lot 102, unit 59. MAP 64, lot 105, unit 63. MAP 65, lot 124, unit 12. And that is it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passed?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $236,251 for tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 73, lot 130. MAP 81, lot 34. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 102. MAP 32, lot 12, unit 17. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 207.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passed?
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve elderly exemptions for $183,751 for tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 104, lot 79, unit 311. MAP 69, lot 16.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous?
Mr. Chair, I move to deny the elderly exemption for MAP 99, lot 24 for the tax year, well, deny it.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve solar exemptions for, for the tax year 2023 for MAP 27, lot 12, unit 2, in the amount of $11,000.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
I move to approve a solar exemption of tax year 2023 for MAP 85, lot 27, in the amount of $10,000.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous?
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve disability exemptions for $125,000 each for tax year 2023 for the following properties. MAP 64, lot 105, unit 47. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 175. MAP 95, lot 64, unit 175. MAP 32, lot 12, unit 4.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous?
And Mr. Chair, I move to deny disability exemption for MAP 95, lot 64, unit 311.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion passes.
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve an elderly exemption for MAP 95, lot 64, unit 319, in the amount of $525.95 for the tax year 2020.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous?
All right, while I'm still on this page, I'm going to do the timber yield tax.
Please.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept timber yield tax for MAP 47, lot 7, the amount of $558.14 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passed?
And I move to accept a timber yield tax for MAP 47, lot 6, in the amount of $14.75.
And second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Passed?
Okay, and then I have the following exemptions for charitable, educational and religious properties.
Are those in the packet?
No. No.
Okay. Didn't see them.
No, I have them here to sign. I don't know how to go about this because there's so many, you know, there's lots and maps.
There'd be a problem with that being included in a packet before we approve it.
Mr. Dean, can we maybe take this up on May 15th so the board has an opportunity to review it?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be cool. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I accept that. Saves me a little, gives me some time to figure it out.
It's always good to punt.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Dean, could you just speak to the memorandum in our file from Pam on the recommendation for the human services funding?
Yes, so the Human Services Funding Committee met on April 10th and one of the topics of conversation was about the way we pay out the human services funds. Right now, we're making them, making the payments on a quarterly basis and so the ask here is to make them on an annual basis, so it would cut the paperwork down from four payments to one.
Seems reasonable. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'm just vaguely remembering like a long conversation about this at a budget committee meeting back when this was a football at budget committee meeting.
We've come a long way.
We have come a long way.
It's very smooth, the process now, but this will make it even more smooth.
Sounds good.
There's just no date. Do we know when that once a year?
We, the ask here is for, begin this process in FY '24 because we're already in fiscal '23 in May. We've been making the quarterly payments.
So the payments aren't going to all be made on one day, they'll be made throughout the year, but one time a year, correct?
That's what I was trying to, clarification, we don't
No, they'll be made, yes, one time a year.
Right.
But all of them made at one, on the same day?
After, theoretically after the town meeting vote to approve the funds, we would then release those funds out.
So like April 1st or whatever? Yeah, because quarterly would be a set date, right?
Right.
And that, we just don't know what that date is, so we just
Yeah, quarterly
It's good to know when we're going to send the checks out.
Right, right now, we're getting invoiced quarterly by the different agencies.
So it'll be immediately after town meeting?
Right.
Thank you.
We ask for a full dollar amount invoice.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize the human services
What's your title?
No, what's, before I make them, before I ask for a motion, is this, is this authorizing Pam or the committee?
Ross? You're just authorizing the payments to be made on an annual basis. We would put them through our regular warrant process.
So you're
I got it.
You're dispersing human services funding annually as opposed to quarterly?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to authorize human services funding payments to begin annually rather than quarterly effective FY '24.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with, for conversation. I just don't like that, we don't have a, we don't know when those checks are going to go out. I just think it's vague, that's all. It's not, it's not earth shattering, it's just that we should have, you know, you know, It's just that we should have, you know, by April 1st or something of each year or something. I don't know.
Let me withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your second?
Oh, I'll withdraw my second.
You throw the second.
And the chair will now take another shot.
What can we use for a date? I mean, I don't want to throw a random...
I would just say first week in April. Approval of town meeting.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
You know, I don't think you want to specify a date.
Within reason. We don't have to specify a date.
Because if you don't make the date, then...
I just don't think having nothing in there is a good idea, that's all.
On approval? On approval at town meeting?
Within a reasonable amount of time, I don't know.
Okay.
Just...
So I would entertain a motion to authorize human services funding payments be issued annually upon approval of such funds at town meeting.
Well, I'll make that motion.
And I will second that motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, all those...
The only caveat I would add is that we just need to sign contract back from the Human Services Agency before we can disperse funding, but that's a footnote on the...
But that's something we already do, right?
That's administrative, yes.
Yeah, we already do that.
Okay, we're just authorizing the...
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous? Thank you, Mr. Dean. And Phillips Exeter Academy is planning to hold the graduation exercises outdoors weather permitting on Sunday, June 4th at 10:30 a.m. They are looking for the town to authorize a stopping of the flow of traffic on Front Street, between Tan Lane and Elm Street, and on Tan Lane itself between 9:30 a.m. and 1 p.m., again on June 4th, 2022. In case of rain, they would need to hold the graduation in the Thompson Field House and would request at that point permission to close off Court Street instead of Front Street for those times. The academy will make arrangements and pay the cost for the police and temporary barricades.
Happens every year.
Yeah. The only thing I would clean up is that it's Court Street between those same two streets, Elm Street and... Well, not Tan Lane, Elliott Street or whatever, Pine Street, whichever comes first. Probably Pine Street.
So can you say that again?
I would, for the... For the Field House, Thompson Field House, in case of weather, that the Court Street closure be contained within Elm Street and Pine Street.
Yeah, that makes sense. Then you can root around.
Okay.
Because you still have Front Street to root around then.
So I would entertain a motion to grant the request of Phillips Exeter Academy to stop the flow of traffic on Front Street between Tan Lane and Elm Street and on Tan Lane itself on Sunday, June 4th, 2023, between 9:30 a.m. and 1 p.m. And to also authorize, in case of rain, the stopping of traffic flow on Court Street be contained between Elm Street and Pine Street for the same time on June 4th, 2023, 9:30 a.m. to 1 o'clock p.m.
Some oaths.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous? And we also have a request for lawn signs to be placed on town property from the Exeter Rotary. The Exeter Rotary will be advertising a dance party. And...
Are these lawn signs, like political lawn signs, or...?
These are to promote...
A dance party?
A dance party supporting student scholarship and local community nonprofits.
No, I mean in description. Are they a sign with metal spikes or are they sandwich boards?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Mr. Dean, do we know the answer to that? I mean, this is obviously what the sign's going to look like.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, could you repeat that?
How are the signs going to be? Are they on those metal...
Stakes or the sandwich boards or...?
Yes, okay.
Well, we do it at Guinea Road for events happening at the middle school.
Well, they're looking for it on the sidewalk in front of Town Office and another by Gale Park that would go up, well, effective tomorrow and be taken down May 5th.
Friday afternoon.
Four days.
Four days.
Doesn't this type of thing normally go on the signboards in front of the town hall?
Yes.
Yeah.
If there's scheduling is possible.
Oh, is it already... Is that already taken?
I don't know, but that would be the only holdback from doing that.
Yeah. And this is happening when?
This may be...
I guess I'm okay with this, but I wouldn't want it to be a precedent. I would prefer to see... I would prefer to see the town hall signboards used for this type of thing.
So I would rather they ask a private property owner nearby.
Yeah. And it's a great cause and a great organization.
I agree with you, though. I mean, if we do... We start that process, how do we stop it?
I mean, they're kind of right up against it here. So I'm inclined to allow it one time.
I think that's hard to walk back from.
Yeah. Yeah.
What alternatives can we offer?
Well, I think you mentioned the signboard and the plywood, you know, that... Those places, we could look at them and whether they're available or not, I don't know. That would be one alternative. Other than that, there's not a lot. I mean, the board has approved in the past, like the mattress fundraiser and things like that that go in the right of way. I was just thinking about the location.
See, if we want to do the right of way, that could be fine on... The only thing wrong with the right of way in front of the Town Office building is that's hidden behind cars, so that would be a reason to want to put it up higher. And there isn't really any right of way to put it on it and around Gale Park.
I don't have a good solution. I'd like to accommodate.
Yeah.
But I don't want to set a precedent.
I have no solution. I agree with what Molly and Dan said. It's a great idea. It's a, you know, a great fundraiser, but precedent setting is a difficult thing to get around once we start doing it, so...
So we can go back and have a conversation with them about that?
I think that's probably right if we can make some other suggestions, but I've just... I'm fearful of, you know, once you start allowing folks to put signs up, how do you stop? Where do you stop? Where can you stop? And if it's a fundraiser that would offend folks, it's just, I don't... Like you said, Selectwoman Cowan, you can't walk that back. Okay, so...
Okay.
Is there something static that's been like sitting in the town hall? Announcement thing, or do we... Do we have timeframes on when, how long things are...
We typically do, and Assistant Town Manager can comment on that.
Okay. Thank you.
So organizations can request it up to 365 days in advance if they're a resident organization, and then there is usually, I believe it's a two-week timeframe unless there's nobody else looking for it. So I believe at this time, the team event... I'd have to go back and look at the regulations, but I do believe the team already has their sign up right now. But I'd have to go back.
Is it in the extended period of time or in the two-week period of time?
I can't remember.
So that might be an option?
It's permitted through Park and Rec. I don't have access to that anymore.
Could you?
We can find out, certainly. It's just tricky because the fifth is what, Friday?
Friday.
So it's Monday. That's where it becomes challenging. But those are the only two locations that we permit for sign, putting signs up at this time.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report.
Okay, so we're continuing to work with the farmer's market, working on finalizing the permit that they are working under, so we've got that coming. Don't anticipate at this point any issues, but if certainly if some come up, let the board know about that. Facilities reports are coming in from Bureau Veritas, who is doing the facilities condition assessment. That's been going well. We've received probably, I would say, 10 different reports at this point from various town buildings, so that's been very good. We've been meeting with EXTV, the Assistant Town Manager and myself, on a semi-regular basis to talk to them about just some different issues with EXTV, and one of the bigger ones is looking at the Wheelwright Room for an upgrade in terms of videography and being able to broadcast meetings from the Wheelwright Room, so you may be seeing something from them soon. I wanted to recognize Melissa, her Assistant Town Manager, who has been diligently working on the Department of Labor audit and has been working on that in the past, not just the past week, but as things ramp up. We got a visit last week from the Department of Labor. They walked this building, they walked other places, and we need to get ourselves situated to get into compliance here pretty soon, so you'll be hearing more about that. And then a recent email we got today from the Communications Committee from Martha MacIntyre. She suggested that due to quorum issues, they're still having quorum issues even at five members, so they're talking about reducing it down to three and approaching the board with that in mind, a three-member committee. So just to report that out to you. The Down Easter delays continue for North Bus Transportation, North Station. We're continuing to work on the water sewer rate study. The board will see a 79E application at your next meeting. And that's what I had.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dean?
What is the site of the... I've gotten this question several times. The site of the farmer's market that's being considered?
Swayze.
It's still going to be at Swayze?
Yes, that's the plan.
Okay, great. And that opens next week?
It is next week, yes.
Great. Fantastic.
Yes, I think that was in the EXOTV report.
Yep.
Great. Select Board Committee reports. We'll start down here, Selectwoman Belanger.
It's not as long as it usually is. So our Saturday, the 23rd, we were all at our goals meeting. That was a great way to start a Saturday morning. Housing Advisory Committee, we had a work session scheduled for last week, and we had a scheduling problem where one person could only be there for 20 minutes. So we rescheduled that. So that'll be this Thursday, and then we have our Housing Advisory Committee Friday morning. It's a week early. And Planning Board was canceled due to lack of availability. We were... There were no applicants. It was to do the second part of our series. So that was canceled, and that will be a week from Thursday. Again, no applicants, and it'll be part two of the series, so... And what else? Oh, that was it? Saturday, I had an all-day planning zoning conference via webinar.
Oh, you did? I did.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
All I had was the Heritage Commission. I zoomed in because I was away, and we got to most of the business that we had to before my Wi-Fi failed at the hotel. Basically, we talked, we said goodbye to two members. We reviewed the demolition of 170 Epping Road, which there was no problem. It was not a historical resource to the town, and we actually saw the timber tax, yield tax come through for that property, so that's going forward. And then the other is the certified local government grant for more... Doing more area survey and whether to do the piece of the west side of the tracks or a piece of the east side of the tracks. I just went the wrong way. And that's where I cut out, so I don't know what the conclusion was. But that's not due until June, so we had a chance for another meeting to finish it up. And the other thing is Selectwoman Belanger and I apparently both attended the Office of Planning and Development's online webinar, a full-day conference, and I stuck on the preservation track and got a lot of good ideas from the different communities that were represented. And Exeter's doing leadership things. As I talked in our interview with the guidelines that we have and the applications that we have, there were a number of pens saying, "Can we copy this?" And so that was good. And then there were things that we can improve on, and one of them is the annual overview of what we do, what our mission is. And they also recommended that even if your committee's not meeting, you don't have any applications, that you meet anyway to do those kind of things, to meet those goals and not have it take up the business time. So like, we haven't had many applications at the HDC for a while, but it is time to add solar panels to our guidelines because it's definitely a new material, and we need to have some thought on that. So that's an example of what they were talking about. It was really a great group of people that were on the panel. And also, I was on another one with... About preservation trades. And there's concern amongst the preservation world that the next generation of workmen aren't coming up, that it's not either not well-known that there is such a trade or how to get educated on it. And one of the recommendations, this was a study done by UNH, and it's available on the Extension webpage, I think. And so there was a recommendation, and the group was people from New York to Maine that were all having the same issues. And so it was recommended, one of the recommendations was, hey, you know, try to get the education through if you have a trade school nearby or, you know, something, or a community college and get them to be community college education points. So I talked to our Natural Resources Planner about it and was very excited to get together one of the consultants that was on the webinar and the principal at the SST, who said, "We have a woman that wants to do that right now." Very excited, so they're going to make a connection, and we'll see what happens in the fall. And that is it.
Fantastic, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I don't... I don't have anything, but I did want to flag the same thing that Russ brought up about the Communications Advisory Committee. I have, you know, I think that we could make the Select Board rep a voting member of the committee and also make Bob a voting member of the committee and then be able to continue the work. Or we could like have a special project where we would deputize, you know, like if we did some sort of ad hoc committee within the committee, then they could still do their work with... Because it is a real problem, getting three members, which is too bad, but I also think that there is enough... There's enough work to do and enough will to do the work.
Can we make Bob? He's a town employee, he's the person on that committee. Can he become a voting member?
I would say not, only because the president of the Code Enforcement Officer for the ZBA and the Town Planner for the Planning Board.
I was trying to think of...
But the Select Board rep could be.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, the Select Board rep could be.
Yeah.
And that would at least give a quorum of voting...
Yeah.
Quorum.
How many are regularly showing up? Outside Bob and you?
Martha, Chris, Zigfont, but he's busy. But he could, you know, we can schedule around him, and then Herb Meyer when he can, too.
And it's presently five?
Yeah, we just made it five at our last meeting.
There are two vacancies?
Yeah.
So consider three and a few alternates?
Three and... Do three and two alternates and then also authorize the Select Board rep to be a voting member?
We could do that.
What do you think?
I think that's a good solution, so that they can work.
Anything to keep that committee going, because I mean, you're doing great work.
I know, I agree.
There's a core that are committed to this, so I really want to make it.
Yeah, agreed. It's just to have a committee of three people.
And two alternates?
It's a fashionable motion.
No, the aggregation committee, is that appropriate?
Is there any objection, any... You don't see any problem with that, do you?
Nope.
So maybe we could entertain a motion to reduce the voting members of the Communications... No.
Reduce the membership of the...
Reduce... I would entertain a motion to reduce the membership of the Communications Committee to be made up of three regular members and two alternates and to authorize the Select Board rep to be a voting member as well.
I will. Do you want to vote for that? Do you want to move it, since it's your committee?
I'll move that.
And I will second it.
Any? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
You're the rep, I'm the backup, that worked out.
Thank you.
Congratulations, smartphone.
I have no report tonight.
Okay, and I attended the Swayze Park trustee meeting, which I believe lasted less than 20 minutes because they have to table several of the agenda items because of the siphons in terms of planning for maintenance and so forth and all that. I did give an update, basically what Mr. Velasquez had updated the board Monday night, night, so that was broadcast to those watching, Swayze Park trustees, and prior to the meeting, they were the recipient, Swayze Park trustees accepted a donation of $2,600 to go towards maintenance of the ZB.
Nice.
Okay, correspondence. Three letters of thanks to, for human services contributions from St. Vincent de Paul, Casa, and Haven Comcast. There's two pieces of correspondence regarding programming updates. We have an email from Todd Marsh, who is the President of the Welfare Association, and that's with regard to SB 110, again, the aforementioned Board Committee Commission attendance sheet, and a copy of the Rockingham County draft budget. Any questions or comments on the correspondence? Seeing none, we'll move on to reviewing the board calendar. And unfortunately, because of the way two holidays fall, we, we may need to meet again, or I'm going to propose that we meet again three times in June, with the second one, let's put it in our calendars, and if we take it off, we take it off. So to get us through June, I'm looking at May 15th, May 22nd, June 5th, June 12th, and June 26th, and then that would take us through the Fourth of July holiday, and we could pick up after that.
What was the first one in June?
June 5th.
12th.
June 12th and June 26th.
Oh, you had that, June 5th.
And if there are any conflicts, you can let me know.
June 5th, June 12th. And June 26th.
Does that work for everyone?
Nope.
That works. Okay, then I would entertain a motion for the board to enter into non-public session under RSA 91A 32C.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, unanimous, the board will move into non-public.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available...